Ready to go. Everybody okay? Call the meeting of City Council to order and ask everyone to either turn their cellphones off or to put them on mute. Would you please join me in the vacation? I've been invited to give it, requested by Council of McMoRroward III. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful to gather together as servants of the city and as residents to conduct the city's business. We're particularly mindful this season of the year of those who are in need and pray that our hearts will be turned to them and we'll find ways to fill those needs that will make others happy during this season of the year. We thank you for the privilege of serving and pray that we'll do honor to thee by the way we conduct ourselves in what we do, conducting the affairs of the city on behalf of all the citizens and for their well-being and welfare. Be our guests this night, we pray, and accompany those servicemen and women that serve and protect us around the world and be their constant companion, we also pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I note that we have at least one amendment to the agenda. Ms. Fleming? Would you please speak into the microphone? Push the button. I'm not sure it's still on.
Can you hear me now?
Ah.
All right. Yes, I'd like to request that the agenda be amended to add an item from HRPDC regarding planning for solid waste.
Okay.
And that would be two D?
That'll be under new business?
Two D.
Uh, D.
Yes, we should put it under new and old business and it would be D.
Two D. Yes, ma'am. And is there another amendment?
There is another amendment. Would like to ask the council to amend the agenda to add during closed session, an item that we omitted from the agenda, and that is for discussion, consideration for the position of City Manager.
Okay. I have a mo-- is there any other amendments to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to adopt these amendments to the agenda?
So move.
Motions are second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any discussion or change in any of the minutes or amendments to any of the minutes of the previous meeting? Let me ask you a question about one item. Ms. Fleming, Alan Drew's issue that was brought before and we've gotten correspondence from you on that, and I would just like for it to be clear exactly what the 1691 is charged for. I understand it and I-- but just to be clear?
Clear to--
So the community understands if there's a one meter for water and--
Right. And that is the way the code is written. He understands it.
Okay.
He never had a lack of clarity around it. He just disagrees with it.
Okay.
And wanted the council to know he disagreed with it. I discussed it with him after the meeting. He understands it. He doesn't feel that the staff applied it incorrectly, but you do have that charge for each line.
Well, I think it's important to understand that there is a meter--
It is.
--for the use of the water coming in and the sewage is based on water consumption.
Right.
But there's also a per-unit charge for each household in a building and they pay the minimal fee.
Right.
And even when I read your correspondence, I didn't struggle with it. I was just searching for the justification behind it. But there are fees to maintain a system to the city that everyone has to pay for in order to turn the faucet on and flush.
Right.
And then you pay a usage fee based on what goes through the meter, the treatment and all that. So they're really two separate pieces of the charge for utility.
And we did go through all of that with him. He understands it. But he also understands that that is a policy issue for this council, that as staff, we have to implement what's there.
I just think it's good for the public to really understand--
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for--
Any other questions on the agenda or comments on-- I mean, sorry, on the minutes? If not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Move for approval.
Motions are second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is citizens' time and no one has signed up to speak, so we'll go on beyond that. It is now my pleasure to be able to recognize two groups tonight. The first is, and I would like to invite her to come to the podium if she would, Ms. Virginia Collegiate, Taylor Vick. Taylor recently won the competition to represent the state of Virginia as Miss Virginia Collegiate and will represent the state of Virginia in San Antonio in the-- And she is the 19-- 2009 Fair Queen for Franklin Southampton and currently a student at Paul D. Camp Community College with a 3.4 GPA, which is what qualified her to compete in Miss Collegiate. And we thought it was important to recognize people who are succeeding in representing us well. Taylor, we're glad to have you and to recognize you. Would you like to say anything?
Congratulations.
And best wishes in San Antonio. Ms. Fleming, as much as you and Erin had so much to do with making sure that we had a successful parade, would you like to take the next item?
Well, you will recall several years ago, it became very clear to all of us that this community had a great deal invested in the Christmas parade. The city took over that one year and had the Christmas parade and people enjoyed it. It was the usual traditional parade. The next year's sponsors were not available and really regretted and missed having a parade. This year, when we did New Year's resolutions as a staff, which was a new venture for us, the resolution that was made in the administrative group was that we would have a Christmas parade. You will also recall that that was the year that we launched the Have a Heart Volunteer for Franklin. So we looked around for volunteers to do the Christmas parade and the most magnificent group of citizens came forward and just took it over. They planned everything. And I will warn you, don't always turn things over unless you know what you're doing. It was very clear with them that it was their parade, they should make it what they wanted it to be. It was a community effort. It was not a city effort. And they said, "Great." And then when we got to selecting who was going to be the grand marshal, I tried to interfere and got shot down. I was told it was a community's parade. I had to be quiet. So that's really how I ended up as the grand marshal. But those people who are here, who had anything to do with that parade, please stand because without you, we would not have had that parade. It was a magnificent event. They did it at night. Would you please stand? And Mr. Davis, try to get that picture. Mr. Davis was a part of that group. They met and worked tirelessly. I've never heard this community have such high praise for anything that we have done.
Why don't you have them come up here? Come up forward, please, and let Frank take a picture in the front. And this is just a small part of a wonderful group.
This is just-- yeah. I just-- I've never seen a group of people come together around an idea like this.
Hey, Dan. Y'all standing up here around the cell?
Around-- yeah.
Ms--
People were really calling and asking what can they do.
Ms. Fleming, don't you want to go out there?
No, I'm not going down. This was purely a community effort. Purely a community effort.
Yeah, we're gonna slide over. That's right. Y'all work together, you won't bite each other.
Yeah, thank you, Frank.
Stand up on the pew.
I see Mr. Davidson's assistance and let him be--
Only because she told him to. Yeah, get a picture, man.
Please don't disband because it's over nor--
No.
--get tired of doing good work. Everybody was so excited about the parade and its success that they really want it to be a strong annual event. Next item on our agenda is financial matters. Ms. Rollins?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Johnson, all council members and all assembled. Before you, you have a budget amendment request from the school system. The budget request is an adjustment of various federal grant awards. Overall, it will reduce the current school system budget by $10,872.
My only question is the resolution says to recognize additional revenues.
Absolutely. It should be to recognize a reduction.
Reduction.
Thank you.
And so likewise, it would be to adjust expenses for the reduction rather than appropriate such revenue for new uses?
That is correct, sir. Absolutely. There was one instance where there was an increase in one of the grant awards, so technically in that particular program area, you were increasing it, but overall, I think it's proper to read as a reduction overall. And because it would be a reduction in overall appropriation.
Right.
What page is resolution on?
The first.
Yes?
The second. Second page. Budget amendment, first of the uses. The next one.
Okay. So everybody got that and reviewed it? I did it at home. I can do very fast here. May I have a motion to approve this?
I'm sorry. Question?
I've got a question, though. Going over this, it says here, reference to the F-2012 Authorization Request of Preparation. We have here Title I Part A grant in amount of $654,632.03. Then we got Title II Part A grant in amount of $99,759.03. And then we had the Title VI Part B Royal Low Income School Program allocations grant in amount of $25,996, which those three total up to $780,382.82. But then I go down here, what I don't understand is, when we're going out there, a grant, you stated here, in order to correctly account for these funds, for FY 2011-2012, school budget must be decreased. And we had here $46,732.24, and we marked that eight and it said it was $10,001.872. Could you explain to me how, when you need it on a grant, if you have to decrease, how do you do that? Is that just shuffling figures on paper? I'm not a CPA, so I'm just asking. And then when you need more, then you increase it to qualify it.
That's not a problem, Councilman Bligh. What you have here is when the actual budget for the grants are included in the budget, when it is adopted, you budget it based on a projection of what you think the grant amount would be. But the school division actually receives the actual grant awards after the budget has been adopted. So through the year, that's why you see certain adjustments in the overall federal and state revenues. So some of them may increase based on the actual awards and some of them may decrease. In this particular case, all but one actually decreased, and that's why you see the overall reduction in the federal revenue agreement.
So we are all legal on this, right?
Oh, most definitely.
You know, the flag went up and so that was the question I want to ask. But anyway, okay. I thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Rollins on this item? If not, may I have a motion to approve the amendment to the budget? This resolution, 2012-12?
So move.
Motions are second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Under new business, nonprofit tax exempt, is that you, Ms. Fleming, or is that Mr. Williams?
Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams. This comes back to council as a request from the last council meeting. You may recall, Woodman of the World came to us. It was the first occasion we had to consider a-- an organization that was a 501(c) organization seek a exemption from payment of real estate taxes. And so a request was made to try to determine what criteria should be used. You have a copy of Virginia Code Section 58.1-3651, which is the code section that gives you authorization to give an exemption for real estate taxes or personal property taxes to a 501(c) organization. The first four things are mandatory. You have to have those things. It's not really a consideration. You have to make a finding that those four things exist. Then in Section B, you have eight things that you can consider, and so I've highlighted those. The question really is, what kind of weight do you want to give each of those criteria? Do you want to try to set up some sort of scoring mechanism? Do you want to discard some of these considerations? Is it something that you want to add under number eight, which is what I call miscellaneous? So that it's brought back to you so that-- the hope was that you would have a chance to review it and give it some consideration and give us some guidance so that we could bring back a policy that would assist council in making decisions on who to give an exemption to and possibly who to deny an exemption to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is just an idea, impromptu idea, but could we base it, our decision, determined depending upon the amount that is donated annually by these charitable organizations, if that amount that they donate exceeds what their property tax would be, then we can grant them the tax exemption. But if they don't meet the-- as much as the tax would be as far as donations to recognized organization or purpose, then they have to pay the property tax. It's just a thought, because there's many nonprofit organizations out there that are supposed to be nonprofit organizations and they have functions and all kinds of things making money and you don't necessarily see where they make a contribution to the community. So this way, we would have some way of gauging what they're doing for the community to justify a tax exemption on the property. And again, it's just an idea.
Worth while?
Is that something we can put under number eight?
I think that's certainly along the lines of what is in miscellaneous is to take a look at what contributions are being made by the organization and that could be a consideration. I agree with that. That's what I had thought about. I have written that one down. Are there other considerations?
And contributions may be in the form of something other than monetary. It may be some other form of contribution to the community. I'm thinking of the YMCA, for example. I mean, they don't donate to the community, but they do a lot of reduced programs, free programs, things like that.
But are they nonprofit?
Yes, they are. I mean, they have the free-- they teach all the fourth graders to swim, don't charge for that. I mean, there are things like that and I assume that'd be within the scope of what you're thinking.
Yes, and it's trackable. For instance, you said they teach the kids to swim. They could document how many children they teach and what the average cost would be for those children had, you know, if they were charging something, you know, we can--
And also, it may be that when they come requesting that, they just have to justify and they can choose how they want to justify.
Fine. They can choose how they want, but I would hope that it would be something that we would be able to track, you know, because they, you know, I hate to say, but, you know, anybody who has a nonprofit organization can say, "We make charitable contributions to the community." But that may mean that they come out twice a year and pick up trash on the street. To me, that doesn't justify really a charitable contribution to the city to justify not having to pay your property taxes. So if we had some sort of a check and balance-- Thing to thing.
Good. So kind of-- Isn't this something that probably-- is this something that would be worthy of a work session to kind of go through to quantify or to really help establish policy rather than just kind of shooting from the hip?
Well, that-- if you recall, the first suggestion of it came from Councilman Burgess and his suggestion was catched in the framework of actually forming a committee. And there was a motion made and seconded, voted on. Afterwards, there was a discussion that led to putting it back on the agenda so council would have an opportunity to discuss the matter as to what they might want to send to a committee if council decided it wanted to send it to a committee or hold a work session. So it's sort of in that terms, it's coming back to you because that was the request that y'all have an opportunity to consider it. And so that's why it's back on.
Can you refresh us as to who was to be on the committee or have you got that with you?
It's in the minutes. It was two councilmen, Commissioner Revenue, Finance, and the City Attorney and the City Manager.
Okay. Everybody agree with that? I think that's a good idea. Then we'll just go ahead and--
You were told to bring it back.
We've approved it. Now we'll just go ahead and say, "Do it."
Well, before you get away from it, I want to make sure I'm not leaving any good ideas on the table that you might want to consider in the miscellaneous.
One of the things I think we should ask for is three years of their tax returns as well. And that will pretty much track everything you guys have just asked about.
Or financial statement in case they do the postcard.
I think we were trying to stimulate art and discussion because we were working on the instruction that--
Turn your cellphones off, please.
Mr. Burgess was--
She's got a seven in my bed.
So that means--
Sorry about that.
That means I got one? Okay.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Ma'am?
She's asking me, she's--
May I continue?
Oh, please, I'm sorry. I tell that perfectly, call it.
Mr. Burgess was to bring back a motion and we were-- I believe the attorney was just trying to stimulate some discussion about it, so we'd be prepared when that motion comes back to act on. However, you don't have to do that if you want tonight to pass that motion again as you did once before and then decided it needed to be in writing.
I turned you off one time.
You can do that.
Take the battery out.
I give a-- I stimulated the cellphones.
Turned it off twice, ma'am. I'm sorry. There it goes.
Actually, looking at the minutes of the meeting that was last time, we didn't-- the motion was withdrawn without being voted.
That's what I thought.
So it wasn't--
Would you reform your motion?
I will. I give it to you word for word.
Yeah, send it in.
Send it in.
And in the process of that, since maybe we might-- I'm not prepared to address it in any detail. Could we then forward our thoughts to that committee prior to your meeting? Okay.
I move that we form a committee to explore the criteria needed to grant a real estate tax exemption for nonprofits, which would include two members of City Council, the City Manager, the City Attorney, Commissioner Revenue, and Treasurer to report that their recommendation to council. How much time do you think we'll need? Thirty days?
Well, you don't have another meeting until January.
You don't have--
Okay, so the next--
February.
Do February. Yeah, do February.
Okay. By the first meeting in February?
Okay.
Second.
Oh, a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, before we go, I mean, I think we probably ought to look at, I mean, how about, so we can give direction to that committee, how about alcohol? Is that an absolute no-no or is that, I mean, does anybody have a brother one way or the other?
Yeah, I do.
Well, let me ask a question on this. Talking about alcohol, we've got an emphasis on alcohol, but we haven't had a bar slanted where we have functions and all. What's the difference?
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean--
I'm not saying yes or no. I want to know what everybody else thinks.
But I was just wondering about that, you know? If we do it there, we're trying to put into bylaws here real, real strong, so we can still as a city function serve alcohol. And, you know, just a question. Something we need to ponder.
I'll have to say that I would support that it be included because if an organization gives a dance or a social, and I've been to many charitable functions where they had things like casino, casino night and different things, but it's for a good cause, so we would be limiting them or excluding them from being able to utilize those types of functions perhaps because they had alcohol. So I don't think that because they choose to serve alcohol and a profit so that they can increase their revenues for charitable purposes, we should penalize them or neglect to allow them to participate. So for those reasons, I would have to say that I don't think that we should exclude them from eligibility. them from eligibility because they served alcohol. Now, I can understand that if we were talking about a club, a private club, like, uh, that was, like, one that we had here in Franklin or on the outskirts of Franklin, who served alcohol on a regular basis and dances, something like that. So I wouldn't want to give it a, across the blo, a board support, but, um, I think provisional support would be acceptable in my opinion.
So for instance, if we made inquiry of the ABC board if there had ever been a denial of an application for an alcohol permit associated with the 501(c), that would be kind of information you would want brought to you before making a decision?
That's good and also, um, only if they have alcohol by permit. You know, they're going to have a function, so they go and get an ABC license for that function, but they don't have a regular ABC license.
I understand what you're saying, yes.
Because that would, that would take care of those people like was on the outskirts that served alcohol on a regular basis. Only people who apply for special permits for special events would be allowed to keep that privilege of tax amenity without, um, and have alcohol included.
Uh, you have to keep really in mind as to where the proceeds of any of the events go to and if they're not going to truly charitable organizations, then you would question their legitimacy, even though they may have a 501(c)(3). Or whether, you'd question whether or not they should be given the exemption of paying taxes. Any other suggestions at the moment?
The, the one we kind of danced around in our motion at the la, on the last, uh, request was the timing of when somebody makes an application and when, so that we, whoever's on the committee, I guess the recommendation really needs to come back about, it needs to be included in the budget cycle because we have one that's...
What if you, what if you said that any request is only effective at the beginning of the following budget year?
Well, even with that, I think you need to put a deadline in the, in the spring before while you're count, doing the budget, so you may want to say, if you're done by the end of February in order to be included in the, for the next year or whatever.
December 31.
Whatever the date, that'd be for the committee to come back to us on, but you need it for the planning stage as much as anything.
I think the idea is to be sure it has no negative effect on the budget, you don't budget for and then it's gone.
That's right.
I think we should task the committee with coming up with that date because they can discuss it.
You just asked, yeah, these are ideas being thrown out. Yeah, okay.
Taylor, let me ask you a question, talking about, you know, permits and all for alcohol, I've heard it say, you know, I think Maxwell said about a special permit for just special occasions, you wouldn't give a exempt organization a permanent, uh, alcohol permit for any time, you just do it for special occasions, right?
Well, that's up to the organization and the ABC board, obviously, um, you could envision a situation where an organization could ask the ABC board for a license to serve alcohol, um, and that organization could then be in the business of selling or serving alcohol. On the other hand, uh, an organization might be renting out space for a wedding reception and need a permit or maybe the, the, um, wedding party would be the one to go and get a permit for the wedding reception so that they could serve the alcohol and the organization wouldn't have anything to do with it. So the permit's really controlled by the ABC board as to whether it's a permanent permit or a one event type of permit.
I think the VFW is a good example, I was trying to think of one that was not in the city that we could use. And I don't know that they're 501(c)(3), I have no idea, but should they choose to be, have a permanent club over there and they, you can get alcohol over there whenever they're open, so that would then be a consideration that we would say, we're, yes or no.
You have to pay property taxes.
Yeah, well, yes or no.
Right.
And, and for clarity, Mr. Bligh, yeah, there are groups, um, if you have a nonprofit organization, your charter is granted, for a nonprofit organization, you consider it a private club and you can apply for a permanent license. You're supposed to only serve to members, but you can have a permanent ongoing license. So in a case like this, we wouldn't grant, uh, organization like that, um, the tax exemption, but if that 501(c) organization wanted to have a charitable event and they were serving alcohol that night, they would apply for a one night alcohol license.
But again, I don't think you can say you wouldn't necessarily give it to them because they had a permanent license, they may take every bit of those funds and give it for charitable purposes. So, uh, I don't think the rule on that would, could be as hard, cold and fast as you're trying to make it out to be.
The other thing I've added to the alcohol thing is whether or not the police have to respond to the organization because of issues related to alcohol and, and so that might be something that you would want to know also is whether or not there are problems associated with that organization serving alcohol.
Well, even non-alcohol, just if they're, they're not under control, control their, their existence, so to speak, if there's a problem to the police. Committee's got a lot of good work to do. Have a motion, have a motion second on the floor to, to establish the committee, all in favor to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 And aye.
Now we need the two councilmen.
Would you like to serve?
I'll be ready, sir.
I'd like to serve.
I'd like to, I'd recommend with Fort Greg and, and, um, Benny to serve once the committee reps.
We need a motion?
Uh, we probably, yeah, yeah.
Might as well.
Yeah, let's put that in form of a motion.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Can I vote?
Aye.
Yes, you may.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, would you be clear about the dates when you expect this to come back?
Shoot for the first of February and if that doesn't work, you know, the second, the, the second meeting in February.
March.
I mean, March, yeah.
Will, will you designate a secretary? Will we designate a secretary or who will come up with the date for the meeting?
We can work that out among ourselves, we just shoot them around and get everybody... The city manager is going to probably be the point person, I would imagine.
Do we know something else in our inbox?
Mr. Burgess, do we need to discuss whether or not we will look at any other charitable organizations between now and the end of the year?
Uh, that depends on the policy.
Yeah, you have no applications at this point.
And I would say, just as a rule of thumb, if we're into the budget season, then we won't consider anything till the next budget year, uh, would be my thought.
I would too, but I would think that we would need to clarify that.
Well, that may be something the committee wants to think about when it's...
Most nothing comes in.
When they come up, we can just say, well, just defer. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hazardous mitigation.
Yes, uh, Chief Holz is here to give you any information, answer any questions you have about this item. Again, this is an item that needs to be completed, uh, this year, so we're at the very end of the year, we need to get it done and there's a resolution which we are requesting that you, uh, approve also. I know that you're working with new, new devices, uh, in case any of you have had trouble pulling it down, I do have a hard copy here if you have something specific you want to ask, um...
No, I don't want to ask.
Chief about and he can refer you to a section, it's, it's a lot to ask you to use new machines and find this document, so, uh, first I'm gonna give it to you, they need pieces of it, uh, here it is, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment as Mr. Holz starts this, you all have gone through an elaborate process with the state and everyone else.
Yes, sir.
And put together a refinement of the city policy and I don't know that anybody's had a chance to read through it nor should we need to. I think you all have done an admirable job and you're tweaking things that have been built upon over years of reevaluation. Is there anything significant that you would want to tell us that's just changed?
It's, it's really, um, nothing significant, it's, it's basically a, a revision of our very first all hazard mitigation plan, which the first one the city had was in 2006. FEMA requires a, um, a review and a re-adoption every five years. The planning process, it was a joint effort between, um, the city of Franklin, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, the Hampton Roads Planning District and the whole Tidewater region is going through, um, re-adoption of the hazardous mitigation plans that covers every locality within the city or within the, uh, Tidewater area. The way we, uh, instead of being a part of the regional plan that covers the larger cities, the city of Franklin and South Hampton County is always, uh, split out because there's different, um, hazards and different way the hazards are dealt with in the larger cities versus the more rural areas such as ourselves, so we've always had our own, um, plan that was specific to the city of Franklin and, and South Hampton County and that's the way we started out back in 2006 and we kept that same, uh, thought process going into the revision of this plan. This plan, you know, once again, it only becomes, um, official with y'all's adoption. The critical piece to this plan is if we don't have this plan in place, like just coming out of Hurricane Irene, the funding that we've been reimbursed or soon to be reimbursed due to our costs, if we hadn't had our 2006 plan, we wouldn't have qualified for that reimbursement. So it's, it's basically designed to prevent the federal government from paying out, um, thousands of dollars after every disaster and then the community didn't do anything to try to make themselves and put themselves in a better position for the similar type disaster that they might experience in the future. You know, a good example of that is this building right here, the, if this building hadn't been elevated to the elevation that it is, the 2006 flood would have gotten inside city hall, you know, once again. And FEMA looks at those type things and because we didn't have a recurring, um, damage due to a summer event, I mean, that's what mitigation is, is all. We had some good mitigation projects in regards to, um, property acquisition, um, down on Bowers Road, that was a common area that, that tend, tend, uh, tends to flood even in mild flooding events and because of the acquisition programs that the city went through, we don't have to go back in and get people out of those communities because the land was acquired and turned into green space, so the, the mitigation plan is strictly about doing projects such of that, such as those that is going to allow you to survive any, um, future disasters in, in a, in a better, better manner and reduce the basically the loss that the community's going to see and we're not only talking loss of property, but the possible loss, loss of life. And the, in every plan, you put together projects, things that you want to work on and then when federal funding comes available, you're graded on your grants based on whether that project is in your, in your plan. And we were able to make some things happen from our 2006 plan, uh, such as the reverse 911 that we put in, we were able to receive some grant funding because that was an identified project that we had in our 2006 plan. Uh, we also did a, a significant upgrade to our radio communication system that was probably over a half a million dollars and that was an identified project within our 2006 plant, plan that qualified for some grant funding. And by having an established plan, um, you can seek grant funding that is money that goes into a pot after a disaster, it's just like the Hurricane Irene disaster, they do, um, post-disaster mitigation funding and it's a percentage, they look at what the total cost was for the entire Commonwealth of Virginia and they set aside a certain amount of that cost so that localities can apply for grants to work on some of their mitigation projects. And the last figure I heard for Hurricane Irene, it looks like about $10 million of mitigation grant funds are going to be available for any locality within the Commonwealth to apply for, you didn't have to be impacted by Hurricane Irene, however, if you were impacted, then your grant actually is graded higher if you're going after something that, uh, caused a problem for you during Irene that, or a previous, uh, disaster, then that funding can be used to, um, accomplish a project that's going to make things better for you in a future similar type disaster. The plan breaks down all the vulnerabilities that the city has, everything from hurricanes to snowstorms, fires, um, we even had earthquake in there and when our committee was first looking, it, it started early on with our revision, there was some talk about, do we really need earthquake in here? Well, they had just had the major earthquake in Japan and one of the things I commented, I said, you know, with earthquakes right now being such, getting such national headlines, I said, "I'm very reluctant to us pull an earthquake out of our revision of this plan." Well, then, we had the earthquake that occurred up in Louisa, Louisa County that actually we felt shocked here in the city of Franklin, so we've left earthquake in our, in our plan because we do realize that is, is, we're not highly vulnerable, but it is a poss, possibility. But we look at the, all the different man-made hazards, all the different natural hazards and the plan is, looks at how vulnerable we are to those particular types of hazards and then we build projects to determine different things we could do that, that would make us more resilient to those type of disasters and, uh, making sure that we're, you know, doing everything we can do to protect the lives and property that fall within this, this community. The, uh, plan was actually, once again, it was a joint effort, but a consultant, um, Salters Creek actually helped us with this plan, uh, there was quite a bit of input across the, the different departments within the city, uh, pretty much every department had a stakeholder that participated in the meetings, we had public hearings to get public input on the plan and, um, you know, once again, I think it was a very well thought out process and, uh, I think it will be another plan that will carry us for the next, uh, five years that will give us some good projects to work on, trying to seek grant funding to try to make our community more disaster, uh, proof or disaster resilient. But once again, uh, without y'all's approval of this, the plan does not exist and we cannot, um, you know, seek any grant funding and expect to get approval from the federal government without this plan being in place.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Could you give us an example, um, like you cited the, uh, the building being razed in the Bowers Hill flood area, can you give me an example or cite some of the projects that you have listed in this?
Sure. Some of the, uh, current projects that we've got listed is one of them, um, is, is looking at, uh, some of the existing stormwater and drainage studies to prioritize and implement recommended improvements within our stormwater system. Another thing we've looked at is the possibility of putting in some flood gauge that would go basically at the main outfalls for the drainage system that leads out into the river so that as the river rises, the, the natural tendency is for it to take the path of least resistance and it starts to back up into our stormwater system, so that's another, another project we've got listed in there. Um, we have, uh, a project listed in here, working with the Downtown Franklin Association and local business owners to identify and implement what they call wet and dry flood proving projects to predict, protect structures from future flood events. Um, we also have a, uh, community awareness disaster campaign, um, there's also a project in here to, uh, reduce the prevalence of hazardous trees by coordinating with the beautification committee and, uh, working with professional arborists... with the beautification committee and working with professional arborists to, for tree hazard We have coordinate with the CSX and Norfolk Southern Railroad to regulate and manage the mountains types and times of hazardous materials transport through Franklin and preparing for hazardous material accidents. We have continued upgrades to our radio system to increase interoperability between departments and neighboring communities. We've got some project in here for dealing with, trying to improve our GIS system within the city.
What's GIS?
It's a geospatial information system.
Geospatial information system.
Geographic information system.
Geographic information system.
And that can be used in a lot of different things, everything from work that Brenda does to public works. We got help businesses develop multi-disaster recovery plans, continuing to evaluate our local schools as evacuation shelters and implement recommended upgrades and retrofit projects. We've got a grant right now out there that Donald was working on to allow for a transfer switch to be installed at Franklin High School, which we use as a shelter. That way, we can transfer power from the city power over to the generator that is there. That was a deficiency that we found coming off Hurricane Irene. We had our city electricians, they were up there being very creative and innovative and trying to make sure that we had emergency generator power, but they were having to go into a live transformer to make connections. I don't even like changing a light bulb and they were working inside a live generator to make connections or a live transformer to make connections to that, to that generator. So, we've got some projects, you know, one project that, once again, is to provide a transfer switch where it'll be a switch that will, can be thrown without having to go inside a live transformer to switch over to your, your generator power. We talked about floodgates as one of the projects.
Okay, there's, there's two things I was, I don't know if, how my council will feel about it, and I don't know if we have it, but I've never heard it. Do we have any sort of emergency siren for the blast for the city that would alert the people?
We use, we use the reverse 911 for mass notification across the city. And that's where you push a message back out across the phones.
But if you don't have a phone, you don't know an emergency's going on.
If you, well, you can use it, if you either take a landline or, or we can use cellphones on that system. But you're right, if you don't have a phone, you could miss the message.
Some of the poor people in our city may be without phone. Is there a particular reason?
Mr. McHalemore, could I respond to that? I've had experience with using the audible signals as they are referred to. There've been a number of problems and they may have been resolved at this time. To be effective, you have to find places to mount them. They're usually very large. They are confusing in what they say to people. Some just don't know that it, that's what it is or what is the emergency that the blast is for. I think if you're concerned about that and other ways of communicating the information, it would be a good idea that we talk about it in generic terms rather than in specific terms. And what I mean by being generic is that if we would ask the chief to make sure he looks at all ways to inform all people so that everyone would get it. But I would hate to see us be specific about using the audible sirens because they get used for different things and people can't distinguish between them. A number of cities have looked at that and rejected it for other means. So, it's personally, it is reasonable to ask that we be able to inform everyone whether they have phone or not, but I'm not, I would not recommend that you be specific as to what that would be.
Well, the reason, the reason I recommended that, he was talking about projects, we don't know if, if we'll ever need it. And I certainly am not advocating we spend money necessarily on it, but if it were included in the mitigation plan, it's something that we were looking, looking for, perhaps some money might come down in a grant form and we would be eligible for it. But, um...
And I understand that, that's why I just suggested we look for funding for communication.
So, I would, I would hope that we would, the council might...
I think it's far enough to include that.
And we, we looked at, when we went the reverse 911 route, we had looked at the feasibility of doing a community-wide alarm system. The, the problem you run into a lot of times with a siren-based systems is to get the, the coverage that you need, it just takes so many of them. And also, it, it is a very expensive type system to maintain. And, and we use other things other than just the phones. We still have the emergency broadcast system that we can use. We can put information out over the cable network. We can put it out over regular, the TV networks and also through the radio stations. So, we use a variety of, of methods for communicating to try to get the message out other than just the, the reverse 911.
I, I understand. I'm just concerned if someone's at home watching TV and they have a network or they have satellite TV, so they're not on the cable, they're not listening to the radio, and they didn't hear a phone or whatever maybe. So, I thought that perhaps the consideration of, and I didn't know our city was really that big and these things are kind of loud, I'm figuring about five or six of them around the city. And if, again, for grant monies, and if it was just in our plan, like you said, then it gets a higher priority if we should have an emergency. But without dwelling on that anymore, also, you mentioned something regarding the CSX with the hazardous material that travels through. Many, many years ago, I came before this body as a citizen to ask that they would request a CSX erect some sort of a sound wall along Railroad Avenue, which would also protect the city against hazardous material spills. So, have we ever considered trying to have that because that would be a mitigating factor or could go into a mitigation plan that if funds came available, we could have that wall erected and we don't have to pay for it? So, when you were, those are just two things. I'm thinking if we could get grants to pay for it, would be beneficial to our citizens and wouldn't cost us any money. So, it can't hurt. And in fact, the wall thing, it helps us also with people using the railroad track crossing. I had occasion to communicate with Ms. Fleming earlier because we have people that are making paths across the railroad tracks, doing vandalism, and a wall would prevent that. So, I'm saying is that something could be added to our proposed mitigation plan that we, you know, if it came down the pipe, we would be eligible for it.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's a, it's a living document. We can add projects and because, just because we approved this plan and it's good for five years, they, they want you to go through and look at your, your annual progress. And as projects come on, they don't expect you just to hold off before you put more projects in, you know, before you renew your plan every five years. So, yeah, absolutely. We can look at most, any ideas that we think is a possible way to mitigate the different hazards that this city is faced with.
Chief, you mentioned floodgates.
Yes, ma'am.
At some point, you come back to council before they are purchased?
Yes, ma'am. Any, any of the grants that we would go after, y'all would have to give the approval for us to go, because just like the, the hazardous mitigation grant funds, for example, there would be a match that would be required, a local match on that. The nice thing about that program is the lowest match of any of the grants out there. It's usually about a five, you know, 5% match. And it doesn't always have to be cash, money. It can be in-kind services and all that that goes into that match. But because any grant that we have, any local match, we got to come back to y'all and make sure that y'all are in agreement that if we get awarded this grant, this is the amount of money that we'd be looking at, you know, as a city.
Any further questions? May I have a motion to pass or adopt the resolution authorizing the amended hazardous mitigation plan? No move? Motion is our second.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 And aye, motion carries. Thank you, Vic.
Thank you.
All the hard work.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the eminent domain issue. Mr. Williams, will you start that? We've had a lot of information given to you on that. This comes by way of request from Virginia Municipal League concerning the legislation that is forthcoming to amend the constitution.
State constitution.
State constitution.
If you're familiar with the term eminent domain, you might recognize that eminent domain, our state constitution presently says that a local government or the government, whether it's a state or a local government, cannot arbitrarily take someone's property without paying for the damage, the residue, or for the fair market value of the property that was taken. Those are the two elements that are available currently under the state constitution. What is being suggested is an expansion of the types of damages that can be or should be paid by the locality, by the government in the event the government exercises eminent domain. If you have in front of you, you have my cover sheet, but if you looked at the second page where it has the proposed constitutional amendment, the language that is of concern is before you in the bold print, the two proposed additional types of compensation are that the compensation be for lost profits and lost access. So, for instance, if you, if, if the city instituted a, if the city instituted a improvement that you wouldn't necessarily think was an eminent domain situation because you weren't taking any property and you weren't damaging property, the city would now also have to take a look and see, are we also causing someone to lose profits? And are we also causing someone to lose access? And if you, if the project causes someone to lose profits or lose access, then in essence, you have an eminent domain situation, which means that the city would now have to build into the project costs or monies to cover the possibility of a claim that the city had exercised eminent domain and that the landowner had lost profits or lost access. So, for instance, a parade, like a Christmas parade, where the streets were closed, Fourth Avenue was closed, Main Street was closed. If that caused somebody to lose profits or lose access, then before the city could grant a permit for someone to have a Christmas parade, the city would have to take into consideration whether or not anyone would lose profits and lose access and then base its decision on whether or not to grant a permit for a parade because somebody might make a claim for lost profits or lost access. Another instance might be if you were going to repave Armory Drive. We recently did that. That project took about a week. And so, if we were going to repave Armory Drive, then in consideration of that project, you would also have to consider whether or not a business somewhere along Armory Drive might lose profits because of that project or lose access because of that project. If so, before we could do the repaving, we would have to consider those damages as eminent domain. There is a project for the expansion of the width of Hunterdale Road. Before we could undertake that project or before VDOT could undertake that project, VDOT and the city would have to consider not only whether or not there's a taking of property, and obviously, if you're going to widen the road, you're going to take some property. Currently, you would have to consider the value of the property actually taken, number one, and number two, you'd have to consider whether or not there was any damage to the residue. That would be the impact of the, the eminent domain. Under this new proposed legislation, you would also have to consider if there was somebody along the way that lost profits or lost access, that would be a new form of damage that would have to be calculated before you could go forward with that project. And so, the suggestion is, the purpose of this exercise is to make a determination of whether or not the council wants staff to respond with examples that would show what kind of impact the city might have if the constitutional amendment is approved to include language for lost profits and lost access. I'll try to answer questions.
The purpose, this has been the discussion of the Virginia Municipal League for the last three meetings because there's a constitutional amendment that's before the General Assembly that has to be passed twice. And I think it's been passed once and it'll be passed again before it goes to ballot. And the concern is there are unintended consequences. While it seemed good that you would be able to protect the landowner with eminent domain protection, it has been expanded in concept and applicability such that there is tremendous impact on unintended consequences that cities and other municipalities would, would bear that are much beyond the scope of what was intended. The hope is that the cities will respond with examples enough whereas to persuade the legislature to defeat the second vote on the, on the amendment so that the amendment does not go forward for institution. So, that's what the reason for the request is. And really, all you're asking us to do is to say, would you like staff to develop issues, examples of how that might negatively impact the city?
Well, answer the survey because there is a survey. And so, the request is to answer the survey and to provide examples of what might be considered eminent domain and require the city to calculate the cost of lost profits and lost access, which presently are not damages.
From what I've read, I think the intent of it is good, but the broad brush, and I personally would say that we need to respond to the survey to give them some specifics.
Okay. I'd like a motion to...
I would move to that.
Okay. A motion to have the city respond to the survey with examples. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, the one, I think the one thing, and I'm in, I'm in favor, but I think one of the things that you, that kind of brought this up, is a lot of times you hear of cities fixing a road, tearing up the people's entrance into their property, their business, and for months, the business is basically shut down. And so, they're trying to give some protection for that. And one of the things that you might want to take back to the VML is that cities ought to self-police that. I don't think we need that, but VML should address that and not let cities just run ripshot over their citizens just because they can't. And to try to, you know, get them to voluntarily, not necessarily to compensate them, but, but find ways that will allow that business to continue in existence while they're tearing up the street or tearing up the sidewalk or putting down pipe, that they do something to help that business to stay, to stay going.
Right. And part of, part of the intent was to, as they were saying in here, if you have a bypass, build a bypass because of congestion, you've got businesses no longer on the main road and they're being dramatically hurt by that. It's those types of things that they're trying to hit, but it's with such a broad brush that those that can't police themselves are going to get it, but so are the ones that do police themselves.
Right.
You put them down for a week and they can come back.
Is it, is it correct that the General Assembly is trying to add these provisions?
Yes, through a constitutional amendment. Through a constitutional amendment.
Well, um, phew, I'm a little torn, because I can understand and support what Councilman Burgess was saying, but on the other hand, I think that it can also, without that authority, it can stifle growth, and you don't want to stifle economic growth.
That's one, that's one of the unintended consequences.
That's one of the unintended consequences.
With the broad brush.
Yeah.
That's why they don't want, that's why they don't want the amendment to go through.
Who doesn't want it to go through?
The cities and towns across the state don't want that.
Well, how's, how did they get, before the General Assembly?
The General Assembly, there, there was a, a person that picked up on the constitutional amendment of condemnation up in the Connecticut, and they're trying to add things like that to our constitution. It was, it was not driven by state. It was general, it was driven by legislator.
Well, a, a, a local legislator, a Virginia legislator.
A Le- Virginia legislator.
Yep.
Picked up on what the North did.
Yeah, well, that, that happens.
Now, what we're trying to do is to get the cities and the counties to respond back and say, we don't want to do this. That's what the whole idea of the survey is.
Okay? Motion...
What you're saying, you gotta participate.
Yeah.
To la- okay.
Yeah. Just respond and give them examples of how it might affect them. Motion is your second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And aye. Motion carries. Good, thank you. Item D?
Yes, that's the item that I asked that you add. Uh, this is really sort of a housekeeping item, but let me put it under perspective for you. Um, the Virginia Waste Management Board requires that all towns, cities, counties, all entities have a plan, uh, for solid waste management. Uh, that is new, they've been there for a while. If you are a member of any sort of consortium or arrangement, such as we are, because we are members of SIPSA, you have to designate an agency which will prepare that plan. Traditionally, that plan has always been done, when you look back in the record, through some involvement by both SIPSA and, um, PDC, HRPDC. Those are the regional agencies that have prepared the plans. Currently, at this time, SIPSA is the designated agency. We are required to designate an agency which they may look to as the responsible body to prepare that plan. You will recall that recently, the plan for Southeast Virginia has been completed, has been approved both by HRPDC and the SIPSA board. Experience gained in doing that plan has indicated that, after discussion with HRPDC and SIPSA. SIPSA is a much different organization today than it was when it accepted the responsibility to do that regional planning. They did not have the staff, so they did not have the expertise, and indeed, the last plan, SIPSA had to contract out to HRPDC to, to have it done. After discussion, uh, the recommendation is before all of the entities that participated in SIPSA, to relieve SIPSA of that responsibility because they simply cannot do it. They couldn't do it the last time, and designate HRPDC as the agency which will develop the plan. That is absolutely all given to them, is the responsibility to do that plan. You are not tying your hands into staying as members of SIPSA. You are not saying you will or will not be a part of SIPSA. It just says that as of today, because as long as SIPSA's there and we are members, we have to designate an agency to prepare that plan. And we're recommending that you designate HRPDC instead of SIPSA. SIPSA's been consulted to be the agency to prepare the plan. Uh, our representative now to HRPDC is Councilman Cheatham, and that body has discussed it. And to make that official, there is a communication which is attached, which we have to send to the DEQ saying that that designation has been changed from SIPSA to HRPDC.
Will this be a call to the city?
Pardon?
This is gonna be a call to the city?
No. This is just changing the designation. It's just saying, instead of SIPSA doing it, because they can't. They really don't have the staff anymore to do it.
Did they used to do this function?
Yes.
Okay.
They did. They did. But they were a much different organization, and if you look into the future, you'll see it's gonna be even slimmer and have less staff. And this year, they could not do it. SIPSA couldn't do it. SIPSA contracted to have it done by HRPDC.
But, and there's no, you reviewed, or Mr. Cheatham, you reviewed the plan, and there's no fine print that would limit our, um, discussions or variations how we move forward.
This is simply designa- no, this is simply designating the authority to do the plan. That's all. It's not saying what the plan will be, how it will be done.
And we're not obligated to stick to that plan if it's gonna end up costing us money, additional money?
It says that HRPDC will develop the plan. That plan, before it is adopted, has to go with every entity for approval, so you would see any plan that was done.
And it has nothing to do with our contract with SIPSA.
I'm sorry.
I said it has nothing to do with our contract with SIPSA.
No, absolutely not.
So, that's a completely different element.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the, um, designation change and authorize the submission of a letter to DEQ?
And authorize you to sign it, ma'am?
Yeah, I move that council approved the redesignation for solid waste planning from SIPSA to HRPDC and further authorized the mayor to endorse the proposed letter to David K. Paylor.
May I have a motion is your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And aye. Thank you, Ms. Fleming.
Thank you.
The next on our agenda is reports. Are there any?
The Business Friendly Committee met, and, uh, we had a discussion on some of these goal parties, which the city is looking into and working on now as to trying to get them under our jurisdiction.
Are there any other reports?
Yeah, we have one. Ray Steen's gonna do it.
Oh, that was...
Or she does it, or she designated her...
She was thousand that I said it out loud, so I win.
The game isn't over. Benny has actually been more involved than I have, um, on the issue that he wants to announce.
We do have, I don't think I'm premature, but we do have a new executive director at the Housing Authority. Supposed to come in this week, is his, I think it's first day, I don't believe it's been changed, these...
Probably the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, fifteenth, this, this week. I think Thursday's his first day, uh, Wednesday. And, um, we're really looking forward to having him. He's coming from Hampton and, uh, graduated from Women Mary, from Richmond originally, went to Oklahoma State, so he's got pretty good pedigree, and, um, we're looking forward to having him here and working with us. Pretty good.
Will you, um, Mr. Burgess, will you still be using the services of the consultant?
Um, for a very, very short period of time, we got some issues that we're trying to get through, but once that's over, no, we will not. This person will take over and run the agency.
And this person is already certi- therefore certified director?
Well, it didn't really take a certification, but I don't know if he, I can't remember if he has a certification or not, but it doesn't take a certification, but he's got experience, not as an executive director, but at a high level.
Sounds good. Good progress.
Yes.
Okay. Any others, r- reports? Um, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
Could I?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Mayor Councilmember of the council, there is an informational piece that I would like for you to pay some particular attention to. Nothing to do about it tonight, but I want to bring it to your attention. This is an item that I had not prepared to, uh, bring to you, but I find since I am going to be here in January and will have to start the budget, I need to raise it, uh, before you. The process at which the city, frankly, does its annual budget, operating budget in its CIP, is one that I've looked at ever since I've been here, and there's, there have been some changes that I would like to propose for it. I've talked to, uh, the financial director about it, and one of those items that, um, we are going to institute into the budget process this year is before staff start working on the budget, the finance director and the city manager want to come to the council and talk to you about not specific little things, but overall goals and objectives and ideas and things that you may have that would shape this city and how its resources are, are expended. To do that, we need to know where your priorities are and what are the things you would like to see us consider as the city manager develops the budget, which will come to you. It's not a unique idea. It's done most places, has not been done here. You usually get the budget without having had one word to say about what your priorities are. What we've used in lieu of that is a vision statement which you developed some years ago. I just wanted to check in with you in January at your first meeting. I want to bring it to your attention now so that you are trying to think about it. And in January, you'll see an item on your agenda which says, City Council Discussion of Budget Priorities. It's a new way to kick off our doing the budget. We've not done it before. At that time, we would hear from you where your priorities are, city manager. We consider that as budgets start to develop, and we will also present the draft schedule for the budget, uh, to you. So, just look at that and think about it over the holidays. Um, we can't delay working on the budget. We, we really have to start, because we don't need any action tonight at all.
Will this be an agenda item or a work session?
No, it'll be an agenda item.
Okay, just regular agenda.
Right, right. It'll be an agenda item.
I know you said it.
It's a new way of, it's a new way of doing things here, but not a new way to do budget.
I, I'd recommend we have a work session on that. That's what I was, thought it would come in.
I think it'd be more effective if we could have a work session on that.
I've already handed my things in.
Do you want to put it in a formal promotion?
Could we do that, and could we just have it a work session at that first meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I think I, I feel more comfortable with having a dialogue in a work session.
I think you can have a little bit more dialogue on it.
Yeah. But I think it's good. I mean, we've always best, in the past, we've built it based on the, uh, the goals and objectives, the vision statement and all of that, and we've had adequate input in the past, and, you know, I'm, would, would it be, it would be helpful to me if we had an idea of what the departments are looking at...
You, this...
As far as the city is concerned.
You would, that's not, but this is designed to be, this is designed to be a process where we can hear from you what your vision is for the city.
I understand.
What the, where you want to go so that we can use that as we work with departments. This will not tell you where departments are because departments will not have started working on that budget. But what, what you have done here traditionally is you get the budget from the manager, and you have had no, except for statements that we gather that you have articulated about your goals and objectives. Frankly, since I've been here, I've used your vision statement. It, that may be a document you want to make some adjustments to, uh, that there are other changes that need to be made. I'm sure they are, but this is a beginning point. It just seems to me that managers can manage better if they know what you're thinking. I think a workshop type session is a good way to get that, where you can just give us some pre-flowing discussion about what you'd like to see in the budget and not wait until you've got the budget and say, I wish you had, but not asking for specific items to be added, not asking for you to tell us, we want this little program there. We're looking at your vision, your goal, where you want to take the city, and we'll tell you more about that as we have the discussions.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we include a work session at the...
I can do that without a motion. I'll just...
Okay.
Okay.
We're having the full work session on the first meeting in January.
And I do apologize for throwing new things at you, but I, my professional conscience won't allow me to do the budget again without raising that potential issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're all gonna have a work session, right?
Yes, it will be a work session.
On January the ninth?
January the ninth. Ninth, right.
Ms. Smith and Fleming, that's actually my third request.
Third request?
I hope, I'm hoping at that meeting that we'll share our ideas among all, all seven of them, so that we can gain some consensus and understand what people are...
There's nothing secret about it, you know. I keep getting respectfully requests to do things. My tenure is short. I can't do everything.
All right.
That's where inbox.
I don't have an inbox anymore. I only have a outlook.
It could be more appropriate to do budget.
Okay.
No. I would just like to...
May I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that, that council meeting closed session to discuss appointments for boards and commissions for the discussion of the performance and discipline of an employee and to discuss and consider a candidate for the position of city manager as permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711 AN1.
The motion is your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas to the staff.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everyone.